And Mr. Wilson is going to be running late. But we do have enough folks to get started. So, we begin with FCPS On and we want to welcome everyone here today who... I'm going to start by introducing Sloan Presidio, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services. Welcome, Dr. Presidio. I'll let you introduce the other people here and then we can get started with your presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Evans, and good morning to everybody. We're a little bit behind schedule already and we're trying really hard to be efficient in our meetings, so I'm going to do the best that we can with our presentation here. I don't know that I can make up 10 minutes of time, but we're going to do the best that we can. This is a really exciting topic for many of us. There's a lot of folks in the room here today to talk about Phase One of FCPS On. And I want to acknowledge the folks that are in the room. And I want to start with our friends, our new friends from Johns Hopkins University, Center for Research and Reform and Education. And Steve Ross is here with us as the Director of that program. And Jennifer Morrison, who is the Lead Program Evaluator on our FCPS On program evaluation. To my right, I want to introduce some folks. We have Bob DiMatto here from Lee's Corner Elementary School. Penny Gross from Stewart High School, Mary Beth Luffless. And Teresa Johnson of the Department of Special Services, but formerly the Principal of Chantilly High School. And somebody who was really responsible for leading and supporting a lot of this work in the school and now in the Special Services Department. And maybe even more exciting is all the folks that we have in the back that came here today, Principals and Region Assistant Superintendents and ESPTs and other folks. So if you're here for FCPS On, raise your hand and we can acknowledge you. Excellent. So, thank you very much. So, the purpose of the presentation today, I just want to remind the Board and the community, is to look at our outcomes from Year One of the FCPS On implementation. And Board members will remember that we promised the Board that we would do some comprehensive program evaluation with residential schools. So today is one of the updates that we're providing to the Board. We've provided some written quarterly updates to the Board as well. But today, we look at the program evaluation from Johns Hopkins University. And I want to make sure that everybody is clear that this conversation today is not about the financial strategy or financial plans for expanding to additional schools. It really is taking a look at a deep dive as much as we can at what Year One of this initiative looked like. So with that said, you can also see that I think it's really important for folks in the community to understand the purpose of this initiative. This initiative is really targeted at increasing equitable access to technology and instructional practices that are going to lead to a more personalized, meaningful, and engaging student learning experience that will support students in developing Portrait of a Graduate outcomes. So, content skills and outcomes are really important, but we really need to be thinking about equitable access and opportunities to develop Portrait of a Graduate skills and outcomes as well. So, just a quick reminder about the schools that are part of this initiative. Remember, we have funded many of our schools, but the state has provided funding through our eLearning Backpack Grant for almost 50% of the investment that we put into this project as well. So, this slide shows you the schools that are part of the eLearning Backpack Project versus those schools that are part of the Chantilly Pyramid. And again, you'll see the state has provided a lot of funding and a lot of resources to support this work in our eLearning Backpack Schools. Each of those groups of schools are equally considered full participants in FCPS On. The professional development, the training, and the support that's provided is provided to both sets of schools, working together and sharing best practices. The only distinction is the funding distinction. So, I wanted to provide just a little bit of information about community perceptions and our school perceptions around this initiative so far. And we have an instrument that we use. It's called the Bright Byte Survey. It's a national survey so that we can compare our survey results with national samples. And you'll see that 98% of our students report that technology use in class enhances their learning. 98%. 85% of our FCPS On teachers believe that technology enhances student learning and engagement after only one year of having the devices in the classrooms. And 79% of our parents believe that technology can enhance student learning. So, we have a lot of support in the community and in our schools for this initiative. Also thinking about how would we expect to actually have an influence and an impact on student learning? The graphic here, the infographic here, shows the kind of elements that we need to provide. Obviously, we need to provide equitable access to the devices, to connectivity at home, professional development that's really going to support teachers' learning needs, right? Obviously, we're going to need a sustainable financial strategy. And again, we're not talking about that today. That's for future discussions. But if we can provide those things, then we really believe that we can see increases in student outcomes and student performance. And as Johns Hopkins will explain, as part of their program evaluation, we did not expect to see measurable outcomes for student achievement in Year One, but you can see that we actually have seen quite a few. So on that slide there, we saw writing performance increase by an average of 7% for students with disabilities and 3% for students on free and reduced lunch or English learners. We saw reading performance increase by 4% for students with disabilities and English learners. And performance in math increasing by an average of 3% for English learners. And I think maybe even more interesting than those student achievement outcomes is that last bullet there. Because again, this initiative is about equitable access. So, prior to this initiative and those eLearning Backpack Schools, we had somewhere between 57% to 80% of our students having access to technology and connectivity at home. After this initiative, we're at 100%. And this initiative, again, is really about providing that equitable access so that all students have the opportunities and supports to learn. Buzz through the slides and I'm going to turn it over to our Principals who are going to talk about just a few school-based perceptions and highlights of the work in their schools.
My name is Penny Gross. I'm the Principal at Stewart High School. And so I'm going to touch briefly on the increased access that FCPS On has given to our students. For those of you not familiar with Stewart, we serve about 2,200 students. Approximately 65% are on free, reduced-price meals. And so it has had a huge impact on the ability of our students, no matter what their background is, to have access to a computer. We've seen things with our newcomers. Last school year, we registered several hundred students who attended Stewart as their first U.S. school. And so those students came to us with no background in computers or technology. It was something that we learned when we worked with our custodial staff, in fact, to get online with my time with our new time and attendance program. We were teaching adults how to use Ctrl, Alt, Delete, how to create a password that is secure and that they could remember. And we're doing that same thing with our students that are coming to us with interrupted schooling or having not been educated in the U.S. at all. And so it's given really all of our newcomers that access to get on the computer. Another positive that we've seen from FCPS On anecdotally is increased student work completion. Particularly from our special education teachers, we're finding that our students for whom written work is very difficult, that they're much more willing to go back and edit work that they create when they have the ability to do so on the computer. So, a lot of our teachers are using Google Classroom and our students have definitely bought into that. And we're seeing that they are putting more time and effort into their schoolwork because they feel like they have the tools to do so. Certainly, on the other end of the spectrum as well, are students that are attending four-year colleges after Stewart. It does give them the ability to work on their college applications. And the students were very anxious to get those computers back in their hands this fall after being re-imagined this summer. So they're able to work on their college applications, their essays, to be able to get feedback from teachers by sharing that via Google Docs. So we're finding that that's been a huge impact for our students who are trying to work on their college essays as well. So overall, the fact that we deployed about 1,600 devices, so we do have some students who have a bring-your-own device. But I would say even outside of our free, reduced-price meals, we have so many families that may have one computer in their home and many students are vying for time on that computer. And now, all students have access to their own individual device. So it's been really exciting to see how much this is really equalizing the playing field for our kids from all backgrounds.
All right. Thanks, Penny. And Bob is going to share some of his comments and thoughts with us.
Good morning again. Bob DiMatto, Principal of Lee's Corner. Thank you again for the opportunity to briefly speak on behalf of the Chantilly Pyramid. This is my 20th year in Fairfax County Public Schools. I've had the opportunity for many new programs and initiatives over those years as an administrator and teacher. I'm going to just share a few accounts and some stories and some information and examples about how the FCPS initiative has alone been one of the most successful for our schools' students and teachers thus far. As you know, FCPS has been the premier county, leading by example and modeling best practice for students for decades. I don't need to tell you anything else. What we also know is that students are learning differently and arriving to school as kindergartners with an incredible knowledge of technology skills. In order for Portrait of Graduate Skills to be achieved, students need new opportunities in classrooms to continue to have FCPS be recognized as the best in the country. FCPS On initiative is a key factor in continuing that success. Let me just share some of those observations and examples that we've seen in the Chantilly Pyramid with our nine schools. Remember, it is about the instructional transformation with teachers and the technology is the tool that enables a lot of these changes to be much easier, faster, and more effective in all grades while providing equitable, we've heard that multiple times, right, to be conditioned for all students as well. The blended learning approach which incorporates all aspects of the POG and the new learning model is a key component to the success of SCPS On initiative. This is a blended, balanced approach. The four main factors include the time, the place, the pace, and path on how to incorporate technology and changes in the lesson design that the teachers create every day. So let me just share a little bit. The time. This is whenever the students want to learn. For how long and what day? Weekends, nights? The place? Wherever the student feels more comfortable learning. Flexible seating. If you come to our schools, you'll see many of those changes. Standing up, on the floor, at a low desk, in the hallways while we're stepping over them, at home or even at Starbucks. A pace? It's the front-loading of material prior to class. Repeat at learning times. Review whenever a student wants. And, ready to learn, slow or fast pace. It is individualized, which is the most important. The path? Mainly, this is student choice. How does the student want to learn? A variety of options are provided by teachers every day. Collaboratively with teams on specific individuals. Myon, Dreambox, presentations look so different. Google Docs, Google Classroom, creating videos, Voice Thread. Student-to-student interaction has increased dramatically. And teacher-to-student interaction has increased dramatically. One third-grade teacher at Green Brower East shared that she has always been fascinated by technology, but never realized how strong of a connection it would bring to her and her students. She goes on to say that she figured out the specific programs and how to incorporate them into her daily lessons would tremendously help her students in writing, which we already have seen some of the data, reading, and math. It was the best year of teaching for her. Another second-grade teacher at Green Brower East shared that FCPS On has transformed her classroom in a major way. She shares that students are able to research and produce work collaboratively faster, more effectively than they have in the past while sharing that engagement and excitement levels soar when technology is included in the lesson planning, especially around project-based learning. As you have heard, teachers observed an increase in student engagement. Students are learning differently and have more choice in how they want to learn. We have seen an increase in communication skills as well. There's more talking between students and teachers daily, especially with more reflective feedback, either in person or even online. The technology has allowed for more freedom and creativity in lesson design while thinking outside the box on changes such as flexible seating, which I shared earlier. Another sixth-grade teacher, a popular teacher, shared that one-to-one technology has transformed the way she teaches and thinks. She shares that she has to let go of control in her classroom and by doing so, she has seen students take control of their own ownership of their learning. The students are engaged and have really embraced the use of technology in the classroom. In addition, students are more aware of their own learning and there's a sense of excitement about ownership of that learning. Another teacher at Oak Hill shared that students are taking ownership of their learning and routinely are going above and beyond to showcase their understanding of material in different ways. If you ask students, they are more aware of their academic progress too. Students use technology to collaborate and create now. Most importantly, the blended learning environment changes and the technology enhancements have provided equity, fairness, fair access for all, and a lot of organizational and supports for students in schools or even when they're absent because they still have access at home or even those snow days. In closing, we have observed and witnessed a huge gains with our teachers and students last year, and we look to build on those gains this year during the Phase Two of FCPS On. FCPS On has transformed our classrooms in the Chantilly Pyramid and students are definitely more engaged, excited to learn. Teachers continue to change their lesson design and approaches to reach all students so that they can leave school having POG skills. Clearly, the combination of technology and the blended learning balanced approach has changed the way teachers teach and it has been amazing over a short period of time to witness such a huge shift. The Chantilly Pyramid welcomes each of you to visit our nine schools to see firsthand what I have shared this morning. And with that, teachers and students are going to do that every day. Thank you for this opportunity and thank you for the ongoing support for FCPS and FCPS On. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Bob. And you can see there's lots of highlights around instructional practice to share and we'd love to keep talking about those, but we've got more information that we need to cover as well. And digital citizenship is one big area of focus that we had in this initiative. So Teresa's going to tell us a little bit about that.
Right. Bob did a great job of summing up a very comprehensive review of how we feel as Principals. You know, with Slide Eight here, we could talk a little bit about digital citizenship. I think the FCPS On schools have really had an increased focus on digital citizenship. We've had a sense of urgency actually around explicitly teaching students the skills that they need to engage in the digital world. You can see from the slide here that there were 10 digital modules developed for teachers during the 16th, 17th school year. And as of August, 26,820 modules have been completed and teachers continue to work on completing them. We're doing a great job of explicitly, again, explicitly teaching these skills to students in all grade levels at this point because our students really do at this point live in a part-virtual, part-physical world. So, we'll move on to the Johns Hopkins evaluation.
All right. One additional point that I want to just point out to Board members and community members is that we are rolling out parent modules this fall as well. So we're doing a lot of training in school, but we're going to have modules that parents can use with their students at home. And I can tell you, as a father with two elementary-age students that are all over the Internet, right? There's lots of things that I wonder about in terms of best practices and how to support my own students. And I think this is going to be a great resource for our community. So I just wanted to highlight that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Morrison and Dr. Ross to tell us a little bit about the program evaluation that they completed for us. And there's a 70-page narrative report posted online, so you can imagine it's hard to condense that down, but I think they've done a great job on that for us.
And I appreciate that very much. I do just want to do a time check. We want to be sure and leave plenty of time for Board member questions because they are anxious to talk with you too. Thank you.
All right. I'm Dr. Jennifer Morrison from Johns Hopkins and this is Dr. Stephen Ross. So first, I wanted to review the logic model that we co-constructed with FCPS. This kind of helps to frame an evaluation and also you'll be able to see how our results are categorized under these topics. So in Year One, professional development was offered to all the teachers and ESPTs librarians, everyone within the schools. And then we would expect that this professional development would lead to an impact on teacher praxis, access to and use of technology, and then the physical and virtual learning environment, which would then impact student engagement. So we should see an effect in Years One and Two. Then we would expect that these intermediate outcomes have an impact on the ultimate outcomes of increased student content area knowledge and Portrait of a Graduate skills. But we do want to caution everyone that we wouldn't expect to see some sort of impact on the measurable outcomes until later on. So Years Two at least for student content area knowledge and at least Year Three for Portrait of a Graduate skills. So it's already been reviewed. There were two groups of participants. Chantilly Pyramid Schools, six elementary, two middle, one high school. And then eLearning Backpack Schools, which consisted of six high schools. Oop. Sensitive. Why is this not... Okay. For our evaluation, data sources included 13 focus groups with classroom teachers, ESPTs librarians, principals, students, parents, and district administrators. So in terms of teachers, we randomly selected and invited teachers to participate in focus groups. Four teacher focus groups with two to six participants each were conducted with teachers representing elementary, middle, and high schools. We did interview one teacher because of a scheduling conflict. All Chantilly Pyramid Principals and the four eLearning Backpack Principals participated in a focus group. Two focus groups were conducted with ESPTs and school librarians from both sets of schools. These focus groups had four to five participants each. Then we conducted student focus groups. So elementary, middle, and high school students whose parents returned agreements to participate were randomly selected to participate in one of three focus groups. Each focus group included three to four students. Then, parents of elementary, middle, and high school students who returned agreements to participate were selected to participate in two parent focus groups. So one parent focus group was conducted because the others didn't show up with three participants representing elementary and high school students. In addition to the interviews focus groups, a survey was administered to all classroom teachers in Chantilly Pyramid and eLearning Backpack Schools. The survey was completed by 541 Chantilly Pyramid teachers for an 88% response rate and 216 eLearning Backpack teachers for a 44% response rate. So as a preview of the results that we'll share, overall, participants seemed to be positive towards the initiative. They recognized this was a first year and it was challenging in terms of preparation and support, but they did perceive a positive impact on student engagement and some impact on Portrait of a Graduate skills. So first, we'll go over results related to professional development. Principals and ESPTs librarians indicated in focus groups that teachers were adequately prepared to implement FCPS On this first year. In addition, as displayed in the chart, roughly 2/3 of teachers indicated agreement that they had received sufficient professional development to implement blended learning. What's interesting is that middle school Chantilly Pyramid teachers were more positive than elementary and high school teachers regarding professional development. So now that schools have gained experience through this first year of implementation, they offered suggestions for future PD and support. In general, there was a preference expressed by teachers for a face-to-face format rather than online PD. There was a desire to receive additional PD on how to effectively leverage technology. Teachers requested this PD be content and grade level-specific. In addition, they requested additional curriculum support such as example blended learning lessons from the district. Relatedly, they requested communication support such as methods for sharing lessons, easy access to which apps or programs are approved by the district, and a means for seeking approval for new apps. The next area we'll look at are the intermediary outcomes, teacher practice, access to and use of technology, changes in the environment and student engagement. As indicated through survey results and focus groups, FCPS On positively impacted teaching practices directly for Chantilly Pyramid and eLearning Backpack teachers. The program implementation resulted in observable changes such as more student-centered pedagogy, student collaboration, and improved communication. For example, teachers described using HyperDocs, Google Slides, and Google Classroom in order to offer differentiated instruction to students and to encourage collaboration and communication within their classrooms. Teachers, students, principals, and ESPTs librarians viewed this shift in teaching practices favorably. Importantly, teachers conveyed the importance of being able to create lessons and activities that were more engaging than traditional approaches to instruction. Not surprising, given this first year of implementation, teachers tended to indicate a more frequent use of individualized and personalized learning with technology as compared with cooperative and collaborative learning. Elementary school Chantilly Pyramid teachers were significantly more likely to incorporate individualized and personalized learning than high school Chantilly Pyramid teachers. Then during focus groups, teachers often commented on the use of technology to facilitate collaboration and communication between students across all different grade levels. Also, given the early nature of the initiative, it was not surprising that survey responses indicated that teachers are also fairly early in their use of technology to involve students in designing their own learning experiences and also fostering cross-curricular connections. These activities are somewhat more challenging and teachers will need time and perhaps additional professional development in order to exhibit more advanced technology integration practices. As conveyed through survey responses, technology played a fairly strong role in teachers' instructional and planning activities. Despite this being the first year of implementation, many teachers indicated that technology is integral in supporting personalized learning for students. During focus groups, teachers elaborated on their successes with technology integration such as using various programs for instruction and for collaboration, as well as their ability to design learning experiences so as to allow students to work at their own pace, access content for review, or for preparation for the next day's lesson. Further, teachers, ESPTs librarians, and principals conveyed during focus groups an improvement in students' use of technology as a learning tool. Improvements included students being able to problem-solve, locate answers independently, and being able to provide assistance to peers when challenges arise. Importantly, students indicated improved efficiency and access to important benefits of using technology for learning both in the classroom and outside of school. Although there is room for improvement, the majority of stakeholders found that progress has been made towards achieving a blended learning environment and that a shift in instructional practices has resulted. Feedback from teachers in focus groups indicated that blending learning activities are still very fluid, but that technology integration has expanded their repertoire of classroom and homework activities. Principals expressed that teachers vary in their comfort levels with blended learning techniques, but that technology integration fosters an immediate environment for parental inclusiveness at home. Each participant group stressed a desire for continued improvement in the integration of the blended learning model and a need for ongoing professional development for successful Focus group participants indicated a positive impact on student engagement. Some even noted that using technology has now made paper and pencil activities more engaging as students have more variety now as compared to previously using just one mode for learning. In addition, students were viewed as taking more ownership for their learning with the presence of technology and variety of options for learning. Teachers and ESPTs librarians cautioned that devices can easily be distracting for students, though this can be mitigated with clear objectives and instructional direction. And the final area that we'll cover is student content area knowledge and Portrait of a Graduate skills. And just a reminder that we did not expect to see results since this is just the first year of implementation. So teacher survey results actually indicated perceived impact on communication, collaboration, and creative critical thinking. Teachers were less likely to perceive an impact on ethical and global citizen and goal-directed individual during this first year. Focus groups somewhat corroborated survey responses, though teachers actually commented on students taking more ownership for their learning and problem-solving. They conveyed a lesser impact on critical thinking during the focus groups. So in terms of benefits, a noted benefit of the initiative that teachers, ESPTs librarians, and students mentioned was the equitable access to technology that is now provided to students. Second, teachers described the changes in their instructional approach as a noted benefit. For example, many elementary, middle, and high school Chantilly Pyramid teachers described being able to leverage technology to create more effective lessons and to share content that students could access outside of the classroom. Third, teachers named multiple ways that the access provided by a one-to-one technology ratio benefited their students such as improved student engagement, independence with learning, and improved technological skills. Principals also referenced the student impact as an important benefit, as did parents. Collaboration was also seen as a benefit by principals. They commented on how FCPS On has encouraged collaboration between their peers as well as a collaboration with those at the district level. As with any new initiative, there are challenges to be expected during the first year of implementation. The challenge expressed by participants were consistent with other technology integration initiatives that we have evaluated. First, teachers in Chantilly Pyramid Schools described the challenge of integrating technology into an existing curriculum. Second, teachers expressed that during this first year, a challenge was classroom management such as monitoring students for inappropriate use of their devices. And Chantilly Pyramid students described peers who would use their devices inappropriately on occasion. Both Chantilly Pyramid and eLearning Backpack teachers described the challenge of technical and device issues that they dealt with. and device issues that they dealt with throughout the year. These issues included students not bringing their devices charged, broken devices, and just basic technical problems as dislikes of the initiative. So we did, based on our evaluation findings, offer a few recommendations. Teachers may appreciate differentiated, targeted professional development offered at the school level on how they may practically incorporate technology to support blended learning. In addition, teachers may benefit from district-wide PD, where they may interact and learn from their peers regarding best practices for blended learning instruction. Both district-wide and school-based PD may be beneficial to teachers in supporting the district's vision for blended learning. Technology integration takes time to plan effectively, and teachers would benefit from example lessons or a repository where they may share vetted example lessons with peers. Beyond PD, these example lessons will assist teachers in creating their own lessons that are consistent with the district's vision for blended learning. In addition, teachers' ability to access exemplar lessons may alleviate perceptions of pressure to create new lessons. FCPS may consider developing student device training, as well as digital citizenship training for schools to implement with students. Schools may benefit from specific guidance on developing portrait of a graduate skills, particularly for the areas dealing with global and ethical citizen and goal-directed individual. The district may consider options to communicate information regarding the initiative directly to parents, so as to ensure parents are both informed and involved with FCPS ON. And last, it may be helpful for teachers to learn about solutions to common device malfunctions. Schools should ensure that teachers have access to loaner devices for when a student's device malfunctions or when it is returned with the battery depleted, so as to not interfere with the learning experience. So during the first year of FCPS ON implementation, study findings indicate clear progress in teachers beginning to integrate technology to support a blended learning approach, which has, in turn, helped to improve student engagement and portrait of graduate skills. Based on the reactions of teachers, principals, and other stakeholders, suggestions for future professional development offerings and program enhancements were offered in areas such as blended learning focus, curriculum support, student device training, and parent communications. Overall, a solid foundation for continued and enhanced program implementation appears to have been established in the first year. 20 minutes for questions.
All right. So, thank you very much. And I do want to say, I mean, obviously Jennifer's rushing through the report. The report is posted online, and I have the opportunity to work with lots of research university partners, and I really appreciate Dr. Morrison and Dr. Ross's collaboration on this project. It's really been second to none. And the information in the report is really, really actionable information for us to think about in instructional services when we're redesigning our professional development and providing resource development and support to schools. So they did a fantastic job, and we thank them very much. And you can just see some of our immediate next steps here that are based on the evaluation findings. So really thinking about the kind of professional development, actionable professional development for this year, and the kinds of models that we want to provide around really focusing on blended learning, really pushing that instructional practice. And I'm not going to go through everything that's on the slide, but that continued outreach to parents, the additional work that we want to do to get those parent modules for digital citizenship launched this fall. So thank you very much, and we will turn it over for questions.
Well, thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. And rest assured, board members have read everything, so they come in hopefully well-versed in the presentation. So just, I'm going to take questions, but just to clarify, Dr. Brabrand, our goal today, we, this is informational, you're not asking us for any decisions today, so we're going to ask just questions for information. And I am going to start with Mrs. Strauss. And I would say, because we are trying to keep on schedule, if everyone would keep their questions to about two minutes, thank you.
Just from a technical standpoint, the next agenda item, which I don't know why it's being listed as it is, because it was coming out of governance, but it's, that next item is not going to take a full hour. So if we are trying to make sure we don't shortchange...
Well, we will, we'll see.
Well, I already warned some people, pushing this thing and not giving it due time is concerning to me as a board member.
Mrs. Strauss?
Yes, thank you very much. Several points and commendations. First, I am very pleased, Dr. Presidio and everybody else who decided to reach out to Johns Hopkins, so that we can be reflective as we go forward with this and so that we have the opportunity to evaluate how we are progressing with this. I think this is the first time that we have actually begun an initiative with a partner to evaluate, and you talked about actionable recommendations. Absolutely. This is so helpful. We have watched, over the years, other school divisions who have crashed and burned, wasted a tremendous amount of money, and then ended up with a lot of tools that were not appropriately used in the classroom. So, kudos. This is very helpful. I look forward to the continued partnership. So, very wise way to proceed. And it is time for us to get to one-to-one. And to do this in a credible way that's meaningful for teachers, students, and parents, so it's great. Okay, one question. In the past, we have, there's been a huge discussion from the state on down, our use of, appropriate use of technology, and with children and families that live in communities that do not have internet access. And it looks to me as though, when the kids have the tools, we can load the curriculum, whatever, into, so that all, and I guess my question is, than just having electricity and then going to some other place, we're getting to the point where we've got lots of places where you have internet access. But how are we doing in bridging that gap?
Part of the FCPS ON initiative, and these two, in the Chantilly Pyramid and the eBackpack schools, we included a number of ways that they can have access to the internet. We, first of all, provided information on the Internet Essentials programs with Cox and Comcast, where they can receive discounted programs. We also provide internet access maps by pyramid, so they can know where the free internet access is available. For those that, beyond those that were still unable to have internet access, we provided portable, mobile hotspots, MiFi's. And so those were provided to families that could not afford, either through the Internet Essentials program or did not have access in their particular community areas, we provided portable internet access. So there should be no one that did not have the ability to get to the internet at home in these particular, in our pilot schools.
Right. And then, so my question in the evaluation, because that's always where we got dinged politically on going to one-to-one, has it been, has that connectivity been successful? Do we know?
So I think that's one of the areas that we need to study further in year two. In year one, we did not find students experiencing lack of connectivity, but given the multiple, you know, multifaceted approach that we took to that, I still think we probably need to consider what kinds of experiences does that look like, and just follow up with our students a little bit more in year two. But so far in year one, we've not experienced that to be a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Again, great first-year start on what is a very, very important journey. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, and I echo Chair Strauss's comments regarding the success of a good first year. I actually was intrigued with some of the difference, different numbers and different results between the eBackpack learning initiative and the Chantilly initiative. Largely attributable, it makes sense that the Chantilly had more cohesion because it was a whole pyramid approach, whereas the eBack learning backpacks were focused primarily on the high schools, although I think there are a couple of middle schools that do have one-to-one devices or are trying to get there, at least on their end. My concerns are similar to Ms. Strauss's to access, broadband access. And one of the things that I would like to understand a little bit more about is the scalability, especially in those areas of high poverty, and whether or not you are planning on making some recommendations, especially in those areas of high poverty. You know, we have over, you know, 1,000 trailers in a trailer park and no broadband access in the trailer park in my community, or that go to one of our schools. And so have we looked at what has been done elsewhere with perhaps putting broadband access on buses and parking them close in the community so that that could be shared on a broader scale? Additionally, I very much welcome Johns Hopkins' survey results. When I first read about the focus groups, I was a little concerned because of three people really don't represent a community very well. I mean, they could be excellent representation, representatives, but it's statistically not valid sampling. And I was a little worried with the size of your focus groups, but when I heard about your, the actual surveys, it's pretty impressive that you had 88% and 44% response. I think that's just remarkable that teachers, yeah, bravo, and...
I think, well, let's thank principals, because principals are the ones that really help to, you know, encourage their teachers to complete surveys.
Unbelievable.
I don't think it's possible without help from principals.
Oh, it is obvious the success of this program is because of the leadership by the principals in the building. And, you know, I'm sorry, I should have started by saying that, but, you know, I think that you were very adept at raising that in your, in your comments. My last thing is, the Bite, the Bright Bite survey, who filled that out? How many people? What was your sample?
I'll have to get you the numbers. We can get you the numbers on that.
There's a Bright Bites detailed report attached to today's presentation that has all the details in there.
Did you have all the numbers? I didn't have that. Maybe I missed that part. I was very impressed with what was in there.
We will double-check. If it doesn't have the numbers, we'll be happy to get that to you.
Okay.
The main point is, it was distributed widely to all of, all of the schools to fill out.
So you did have wide...
And we have varying usage statistics based on school, so we can get you that information.
And then finally, and this is really a comment to Dr. Brabrand, I know that you all are not talking about the sustainability efforts in this, but this is directly related to the discussion about resources. And it goes to, you know, we've got to match up our strategic plan with our budget, and we agreed to this two years ago, I'm optimistic we'll have it this year, but that linkage will then allow us to make those hard decisions about ensuring that we have sustainability of programs, and rather than perhaps a scatter shot approach. So I would urge that the sustainability of this program and the expansion, especially, I don't know how long the eBackpack learning initiative has funding. We know? From the states, we have one more year of it?
I'm looking at the back to see if anybody, one more year?
There's one more year of the eBackpack funding from the state, state grant program.
Yeah, because that's picking up 50% of this.
45%, that's correct.
Yeah, 45%, and that's basically the high schools, the six, the six eBackpack high schools. They funded all of that.
And so sustainability becomes an issue if 50% of it could go away or 45% goes away.
Well, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I just wanted to mention that under Dr. Brabrand's leadership, we've begun the work to really do that review of our instructional resources aligned to the strategic plan. So that work is underway. We'll have more detailed information in the coming, you know, weeks and months for you on that. But I would say, when we think about this work around instructional resources, and is technology the only way to get students to learn? Of course, it's not the only way, but one of the things that we keep coming back to are those guiding principles that Dr. Brabrand laid out in the leadership conference for everybody in the division, to think about issues of equity effectiveness, right, and excellence.
It is absolute, I absolutely agree with you.
And we really do believe that this is a more equitable way to get to learning outcomes and a more efficient way to get to those learning outcomes. So we'll have more information for you soon on those, on those questions.
Yeah, with regard to the internet access, we did do a very extensive evaluation and research and program in collaboration with the county government, and that's where we ended up on the MiFi's as being the most effective and most, in terms of the least expensive to providing internet access through other programs, such as on the buses in a lot of different areas, in terms of being able to provide those students the most flexible areas, and also those MiFi's can have up to five devices. So for an entire family can be using them together. So we've done a lot of, a lot of work in that area, working in collaboration with the county. That's one of our joint initiatives we've been working on with the county government.
All right. Are you finished, Mrs. Corbett Sanders? All right, I have two more people on my list. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Just a, just one quick question. I know that, that the content knowledge was not addressed, but I saw that it's two, years two and three. When exactly would you be able to present the board with information that reflects content knowledge change?
I'm going back on the slide deck here just a little bit. So as Dr. Morrison said, when you look at the national research trends, and Johns Hopkins does a lot of program evaluation work with respect to technology and instructional technology, when you look at the national trends, you don't anticipate to see those kind of lagging indicators of student academic performance outcomes until those out-years. But I did want to, just again, for everybody, highlight that we are seeing some initial results already after year one that are detailed on the slide here. So we're seeing some of those gains for some of our students that need the most additional supports to help us narrow some of those achievement gaps. So again, English learners, students with disabilities, those gaps are starting to narrow already after year one.
All right. We now have three board members, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnett-Cofax, and Mr. McAvoy. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. As I stated earlier, I appreciate not only the presentation you're doing, but I actually feel that this is something our board needs to be spending more time working with staff and having a better understanding. The public's expecting this from us. And as the 10th largest school system in the country, I think we need to be well-versed in where we're going with this. And so, while I can't control the agenda, I will just say, Dr. Brabrand, I did email you my concerns that an hour wasn't going to be sufficient, and so I will only hope that we will be able to bring this back much sooner rather than later. So out of respect for my colleagues' time, I'll touch on a couple things. What other school districts, whether through Johns Hopkins partnership or otherwise, have we been looking at to help guide us? Because we never should embark on a pilot in a vacuum. We ideally can look at other school districts that have been leaders in this. And so, as we're piloting through this, we can obviously look and see how we're succeeding and hopefully actually learning from other districts, but what's helping us as we embark on this after our first year?
Let me give you just a few brief responses and then turn it over to Dr. Morrison. We didn't just start this initiative last year. I mean, we started by doing a lot of research and a lot of collaboration with other school systems, really from around the country. We actually visited some other school systems around the country. The closest partner, and I think the best collaborative partner we have, is with Baltimore County. Because they've really engaged fully with this initiative, and they're local and they're close, and they are of similar size to FCPS. So we have done lots of visits to Baltimore, they've done lots of visits to FCPS, we share resources, we share materials, we've done some joint kind of professional learning together. So we are really collaborating with them in a very tight partnership. So that is, that's the biggest, largest school district that I would say we have a partnership with.
I mean, I appreciate that, because what, what really struck me was, as you were talking about year one, year two, three, three to five, and that whole implementation thing. I'm in full agreement with my colleagues and the school system that you want to pilot it well before you roll out something that's enormous like we are. But on the other hand, I know there's probably other pyramids in Fairfax County that are eager to start on the pathway, and they don't want to wait five years till they get their turn. So while Baltimore County, again, I'm not as familiar with where they are in their track, but I would hope they're several years ahead of us so that we're, again, being able to...
So we are the evaluators for Baltimore County's initiative, so if you want any deals about that. Our evaluation reports, we do two reports a year and present to their school boards, so our evaluation reports are available on their site. They are beginning year four of a five-year evaluation right now. So they are presently in all grades, well, all elementary schools are in one-to-one, all sixth grade, some seventh grade, some eighth through 12th. So they did it a little bit different in terms of implementation.
So I would say that if we could get that link sent to us, that would be very helpful for the board, but the public too, because we want to really help with the public on this. The other thing is that when we talk about cost, that wasn't part of today's presentation. We don't have to go into it now, but Dr. Brabrand, I do think that that's going to be an important component, that again, the public's going to be asking us, and we should be able to speak to, to what's this cost... speak to, to what's this costing us in the pilot and, and thinking about budget issues going forward. Um, the other thing is that we are hearing from, um, the pediatric associations throughout the country about screen time. And so I, I felt you all did a nice job of trying to capture that this is meant to be a tool. It's not to replace a teacher, it's not to replace instruction. Um, but I do hope, um, Dr. Brabrand, that's also going to be part of our dialogue of really measuring and seeing, um, the screen time amounts because those guidelines also vary, um, by age group. And then also the fact that in the end, this is a great school system because we are training students to be career and, you know, secondary, um, post-secondary college-ready. And, uh, having two children who are in college right now, the model is still there at the university level, which is the professors are lecturing, the students are taking notes. There is thankfully a lot of Socratic dialogue going on, but the concern with devices is it's not the, the individual-to-individual dialoguing and, and being able to carry on those kinds of conversations. And it's also not always going to be then sort of that shared discussion. They are working together, I get, on projects, but I would just, um, maybe appreciate, as we have maybe the next presentation, how are we helping the public and even the board to understand, yes, this is a tool, but being the daughter of a teacher as well, a former teacher, I may be a little bit apprehensive because I firmly believe nothing replaces an inspiring teacher and the connection that students feel not to just that teacher, but the classmates in that learning setting.
But let me, I mean, let me just unequivocally emphasize that we completely agree with you. Um, nothing replaces an exceptional teacher in the classroom. Um, the technology that we're talking about is a device to create more engaging personalized instructional tasks and assessment tasks. It's a tool, that, that's it. Um, and we do not expect and we do not want a student to be on a computer all day long. That's not appropriate. That's not good instructional practice. So some of the work that we need to do in those next steps is to further engage, and you saw it listed there, further engage with our community on this point, so our community really understands, how are we recommending that this tool be used in our schools? Right? So that they have a chance to dialogue with us about that more as well. So there's a lot more work that we need to do in that regard in terms of our communication.
Ms. McLaughlin, can I, one thing? I do have a geometry teacher here present with me. And just to give you an idea of how technology is being used in the classroom, she's actually flipped her classroom and so the students are watching geometry notes outside of the room so that the class time that they spend in the school building is actually in student discourse, um, around content. She's able to dig in and really work with students on it, and it's been a very successful model in her classroom. So certainly students are not sitting and looking at devices during their class time in all classrooms. I think there's a lot of different hybrid options going on that are really helping students to better understand content.
Yeah, I was going to make a quick comment about higher ed because we're in higher ed. And certainly in my career, it was all, um, a professor talking to students, but higher ed is changing also, and it's moving more toward a blended learning kind of concept. As a matter of fact, in our Johns Hopkins evaluations, we're evaluating more and more apps and programs that design for students to self-learn, but instructors to also do Socratic questioning, and so to have the benefits of both. So the best of all teaching is really to use the best of a teacher, but also to use technology in a way that increases efficiency and gets you better ready for careers, which are increasingly using technology. So we're going to see that change in higher ed more toward what you're doing here. Higher ed is typically slower to change pedagogy, but it's changing.
Well, I, I appreciate it. I've got a, a senior at Georgetown and a third-year UVA, and, um, I've been pleased actually that they're still talking about inspiring professors and the dialogue that's going on.
I hope they always will do that, and I think they will.
I also wanted to share too, um, in addition to providing the link to the Baltimore County reports, we did a review of the literature on districts, um, doing one-to-one initiatives that we'll share too, so that you can see what the findings were, like across the country.
Thank you, that would be great. And I'll just say that it is how we communicate this issue, and so I made a note, and this is why I got a little bit apprehensive. The quote was, "The teachers learning to let go of control as the students are taking their own ownership of learning." And so we have to be careful on how that sounds because that did sort of start to sound like the teacher's not in control of the day-to-day learning in the classroom. And I would think that making that kind of description, then we'd better be able to explain what that looks like because I think parents still want to believe the teacher should be, um, owning the classroom and, uh, being able to help children with their supplemental learning is fine, but in the end, um, we're, we're wanting our children to benefit from all the teachers are going to impart.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Could I, could I just interject on that comment?
Sure, very quickly, please.
Just to come back, just to share. Um, I think it's that what I said was intended that instead of the teacher always being the facilitator up in the front of the, as the lecturer of the room, the classroom has changed. Teacher is sharing, uh, you still have your hook lessons, you have teacher teaching, uh, and then there's a lot of activities that teachers are breaking apart into small groups. So, um, there's so much more reflective time that's going on in the classrooms in all of our schools. It's just incredible. So I'm sorry if that was misleading, but that wasn't the intent.
No, thank you for that clarification, and I, again, appreciate the time you're bringing here this morning so we can hear directly from our schools.
And I, I do just want to give a, a kudos to Bob and to Lee's Corner because in our FCPS learning model, we talk about learner-centered instruction, and their school really epitomizes that in terms of students being very motivated, very engaged in the instruction, and teachers being able to more effectively differentiate instruction, working with small groups of kids, individual kids, coaching kids, and really providing a more learner-centered approach to education. So they're doing a great job in that regard.
All right. I have four board members. Ms. Darnett Kofax?
Thank you all for being here today. Um, I, I do want to say congratulations to that entire team up there for really taking this type of approach, um, to slowly initiate, um, th, this programming because it has always been a huge concern to this board. While we know we, we need to progress in some areas, um, there have been a lot of large school systems that have done this and have been really not successful in it to the detriment of students. So I appreciate this slow, methodical approach, and, um, I am so excited to see the results that are here, um, by, by doing it this way. I do have to say, Dr. Brabrand, of course, I am concerned about the sustainability and the costs as I kind of know what the costs are, being a former budget chair and chair of this board, um, but, um, I think it's definitely something we need to, to, to be on. And, um, as I agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders' statements about this is something that's been put in our strategic plan, it's something that we want to include, and it, it's very important when we talk to our funding partners, um, at the state and national level because we're seeing these good results, and it's, it's, it's wonderful that we have this positive information. Um, I, my question was basically to principals, gross, and Amato. You've started to say some of these things as in a reference to other board members' questions, but when you talk about blended learning models and things like that, if you could just give me specific examples, you started to with the algebra teacher and you as well, but if you have other examples, I'd just like to hear how these devices have changed content delivery for you in, in a positive way.
I'll just expand on the geometry model. Um, one of my teachers, Emily McLeod, is here, and she's actually a product of Federico County Schools. So she was one-to-one as a high school student. Um, she is, um, working on flipping her classroom. So a great example was, um, during SOL review time when we're trying to get our students prepared for these very high-stakes tests that they need in order to graduate. She created modules, um, for all the standards in geometry. So instead of the teacher trying to address everyone's needs at once, students received a little booklet that basically said, "I recommend that you review this standard first." Um, and so she was able to personalize that review to every single student based on assessment data that she had collected during the school year. And then during that class time, she's going from student group to student group, kids are clumping up, they're talking, they're working through on the modules that she's created. Um, we had a long-term sub in one of our geometry classrooms. So again, those students in a different classroom were able to benefit from the materials that she created, um, because obviously it's hard often to find a qualified substitute teacher to come in. And so not only did she benefit the students that she was working with, but also a whole nother classroom of students were using those resources as well. And so it allowed her to really target every single student's individual needs. She had an assessment at the end of that module, so students would test out, so they would get immediate feedback on whether they have mastered that module and then should move to their next choice. So it was just the way that she spent a couple of class periods really bringing kids back through content specifically personalized to their own, um, struggles, which was amazing to see.
That is amazing to see because that's a beautiful way to use the flip classroom. So...
Ms. McLeod, will you please stand up?
Thank you so much, Ms. McLeod, for, for what you've done and, and on an elementary school level.
Sure, absolutely. And I have a sixth-grade teacher here, Chrissy McLaughlin, as well. And she has just been, uh, phenomenal with, um, her classroom has gone above and beyond. Um, the kids are just so engaged in that room, and specifically Google Classroom has been a, a huge piece of that. Um, but I've, it's been amazing, as I shared, twenty years I've seen this motivation. She, uh, flipped classroom as well in some aspects, but a lot of video recordings, voice threads, um, very reflective, kids recording each other, recording themselves, and then getting responses from Ms. McLaughlin. It has just, just been absolutely amazing to see. Um, and she's just gone above and beyond those aspects, and she could share way more than what I could possibly. She lives and breathes these things, but her, um, lesson plans have been transformed completely. Um, we joke, um, we talk about, uh, language arts a little bit, um, and I see her in Socratic seminars with kids, and, um, they have already seen videos of those and then coming into the classroom. So the front-loading aspect of it all has been tremendous as well. So, um, kudos to Chrissy and to Lee's Corner, but she has just been the, the frontrunner for us in taking this on, and it's just been a truly reflective practice with a lot of more writing that has increased in the classroom, uh, online and with paper and pencil still, so.
Just, if we could have her stand up and give her a round of applause as well. And, and if I could just, if you'd indulge me for thirty seconds, I want to tell one of my own personal stories because I think, as many of the board members know, my, uh, two sons are in elementary school, they're in a Spanish immersion program, and my fifth grader is in advanced math and Spanish immersion, and all of his work comes home in Spanish. His teacher actually creates very quick little videos of the homework practice so that the students can see some examples of how to solve the problems. And that's the only way I even know what they're working on because the, the directions are written in Spanish, right? So that's great, and it's an equity issue because that's not a one-to-one school. So there are probably some kids in that school that don't have those opportunities that my kids have. So we're seeing teachers do all kinds of creative things, oftentimes things that aren't even that difficult to do, um, that have a tremendous impact on student learning opportunities.
Well, thank you so much for sharing that. I think it's important, uh, you know, Dr. Brabrand, when we see these best practices, models exhibited, and we do our professional development for our teachers, that these are the models that we're learning, that, that we're teaching our other, our other teachers and other clusters and other regions about these excellent teachers and how they're, they're taking technology and using it in such a positive way. So thank you for sharing that.
Mr. McAlveen?
Uh, thank you all. So first question goes to our, our friends from Johns Hopkins. Uh, aside from the funding issue, do you think that FCPS is prepared to move forward, um, broadening this, this program to more schools?
I'm so used to muting myself and then unmuting. Um, yes, I, I mean, I think some really good lessons were learned this first year, um, that are absolutely not unique to Fairfax County. I think in Baltimore County, we saw really similar, um, benefits and challenges. I think one thing that really stands out that I almost wish Baltimore County would do that Fairfax County has is that there's, like, everyone will say, "We're all focused on the instruction, it's not about the technology." Like, you hear that all the time. And then when you do the evaluation, you're like, "No, you guys are focused on the technology." Um, but Fairfax County really is focused on the instruction. I think, um, having that ESPIT, like, the person that's in the schools every day leading that instructional approach to make sure it is instruction and not technology, I think is a huge strength. Baltimore County has something kind of similar, but not as clear, I guess. And I think that's a, because you've got, here, you've got someone who's focused on the instruction, and then someone focused on the technology, but the instruction is the forefront. So, long way of saying, um, I, I do think some, as, if, um, some of our recommendations are taken and there's a focus on professional development, I absolutely think you could expand.
Okay, great, that's helpful.
I would like to just add to that if I could because, um, while I think that we're definitely ready to expand a hundred percent, I don't believe that we're ready to go from where we are to everything overnight.
Right.
And part of, I think, the success around this has been the school, school-level commitment to do this work. So I think where you've seen school districts not be successful is they've tried to roll out division-wide implementation, and the school personnel did not necessarily have the same vision for change and innovation, and they didn't have the level of commitment and investment to make it work. In the schools that we're talking about that have been part of FCPS ON, the principals, the teacher leaders, I mean, obviously every, you can see how many folks are here today to be part of this work session because they're committed to the work. And it takes that kind of leadership to be able to do this. So we have role-specific leaders in the school that can help, like ESPITS and T-SPECS, but those folks alone cannot do the work. So the approach that we've taken in phase one is to get a school leadership team, thinking about other folks that have the capacity to support the practice. Advanced academic resource teachers, instructional coaches, librarians, team leaders, CLT leaders, those are the folks that are leading the work in the schools. It's not just the principal and the ESPIT. And that's why I think our schools have been able to achieve the kind of success that they have in year one, is they have a school-wide vision and commitment to do it. So if we move forward, we need to think about investing and supporting schools, and that way is going to be critical.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you for that. Um, and then, um, lastly, uh, for the, the backpack schools, um, I'm glad to hear we have one more year, but are we beginning the process for, uh, looking to renew that grant? How does that work? And are we confident we could move forward with that?
So we're looking at all of our funding options, grants included, but that's part of the conversation that, uh, Ms. Corbett Sanders raised earlier, is we need to be thinking about our overall costs in terms of aligning some of our resources to some of our strategic initiatives and streamlining some of our costs as they relate to the ongoing need to update and refresh instructional materials. So we're in the process of trying to get some different financial models together right now, and I think we've got a really good start on it. But knowing that we only had an hour for the work session today, um, and that that work isn't complete, we didn't think we would, you know, be wise to start to, to wade into that water today.
Okay. Um, and just one, one last point that I would make. I agree with my colleagues who, who talk about the, the importance of, of internet access, and I feel that, you know, our county has for a long time not done enough on this, and this is not on the schools, this is on the county itself. Um, and I think as we move forward, we need to raise that as a priority in our discussions with, with our county-level leaders because, um, it's frankly appalling, um, that we still have issues where trailer parks and other places don't have that kind of access.
If I could, Mr. McAlveen, when I look at the, the one Fairfax list of priorities, it's very clear, I think it's number sixteen in there, that we would get to equitable, universal access in the county. So we've enumerated that as a priority in our community. Now we need to figure out how we get there, so.
Ms. Pawcheck?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate this conversation and the work you've been doing. I know you have a team, both Focus, the FCPS ON team, and then at the Pyramids, um, doing the implementation. Um, and as I like to remind people, this is technology. I believe Horace Mann visited every school in Massachusetts and recommended a blockboard, right? So that was innovative technology. So this is where we are today. Um, and I do think that it's important that we look at technology and how it's used and how it's used for instruction, um, both individualizing and adding to collaboration and the, the skills we're looking for. So I really appreciate the work you've done on that, and especially happy to see the researchers here who can share and compare experiences in Baltimore, because I know we've been working with them. Um, so I guess, you know, obviously I would like us to be able to come up with cost expansion and looking at possible partnerships, um, beyond what we currently have for that. Um, also, I was wondering, A, you know, I, as a teacher, I love being able to give my Spanish students, um, access at home. I have kids who are addicted to Quizlet, and you know, they get to, that's how they love to learn, others hate it. So you give variety, and I think this is hopefully adding to that variety and not just, you know, supplanting what we've had, supplementing, sorry, supplanting. Um, but, um, my question is, I know we've talked a bit about, a couple of questions, teachers, um, innovative work that's happening and looking at professional development. So is this, have we started to look at what that would look like, whether it's sharing among similar departments, teachers, leadership across the board? So some of it is, right, professional development, maybe more top-down, but what about the more horizontal? horizontal development and sharing?
Yeah, so Bob and I are both going to answer some of this. I would say, first of all, you have to have, again, a dual-track kind of agenda on professional development. There has to be some things that the division can provide. We can provide access to resources, we can streamline things in terms of the digital content that students might have access to, right? There's all kinds of things we can do for efficiency of scale at the division level and professional development, I think, needs to happen to some degree at the division level. But the most important professional development is going to be that job-embedded professional development that we cannot provide out of central office. So that's why we took the approach this year, is to build those leadership teams in schools that would be the ones that would be providing that daily job-embedded support to teachers and to try to give them resources and materials and skills that would help them be successful. So we're still learning about the best ways to do this, but I think it's really a partnership between central office and schools to provide job-embedded PD.
Yeah, I'm, you know, it's happening every day in our collaborative learning teams, our CLT's weekly, but we have to give kudos out to our ESBIT team and our instructional leaders. They are playing a huge role in developing professional development for our schools. Two things that we've done in the Chantilly Pyramid already is when the first-year teachers came back this year, that first week, we had an afternoon of professional development for those new teachers to get on board and understand the structure that was in place and try to help them along so that they could catch up a little bit in some aspects. And the second thing that's coming up Friday is our big Pyramid professional development on blended learning and our technology component of that. So the entire Pyramid will be getting together at Chantilly High School in Franklin, where our elementary students and, excuse me, teachers will be. And they'll do exactly what you're talking about, having the opportunity to horizontally by grade level, have that opportunity to share ideas, projects, and open up that discussion and have that dialogue to have those connections. And same for our high school, middle school folks will be doing the same there. So they have a variety of activities that they'll be doing within that framework as well.
That's wonderful and I appreciate that, that's great. And I guess a quick follow-up, do we envision, let's say, you know, we expand to a new pyramid and they say, well, that's great that Chantilly did it that way, but we'd like to, you know, look at a slightly different model, focus on something a little bit different. Are we building kind of some flexibility to say, our pyramid needs this, this is how we can do it here?
Sure, I mean, I can jump right back in this. I can just say FCPS ON has just been fantastic, supportive, flexible. When we took this on, the nine schools, we've had all the liberty to kind of make some adjustments as we've gone along. It's been fantastic. And I would just say that every school district, every region pyramid's going to look differently and those principals at that time are going to have to make those decisions based on the needs of their communities. But we did that, we took a step back, we talked about it, we had dialogue, many, many hours of dialogue with all of us and we came up with some recommendations and FCPS ON was fully supportive of having that flexibility. There was no pressure as far as you have to do it one way or the other, it's what fit your schools.
Thank you, that's wonderful. I know I'm a time crunch, but one more, more like outside of FCPS levels, whether Dr. Presidio or Mary Beth or our researchers. I guess my other questions are beyond, you know, what you're seeing in the school systems. My first part of the question is, A, at the teacher training level in colleges, universities, are you starting to see this kind of development really happening or is it mostly, you know, the school systems that are needing to do this and implement it? And B, you know, just a little devil's advocate question that I initially believed this, but I know in the past, we've seen, right, a new skill, new way of doing something comes in and it raises level partly for, I forget the effect, but the kind of engagement, something, the new effect. Have you seen that or do you perceive that kind of dwindling away or do you see that this can continue to be increased? You know, I love the performance increases in our special needs and ELL community, so do you foresee that as a long-term effect?
But let me just real briefly say about our experience in FCPS in terms of working with higher ed. You know, we hired the most of the teachers that George Mason puts out, right? So we're the biggest employer of George Mason graduates. So we're actually also working very closely with professors there that are involved in the teacher ed side of things to really think about how they can better equip those teachers to be prepared to teach in one-to-one classrooms. And that's just one thing, we're working on issues with respect to English learners, with respect to performance-based assessments. But we have a good partnership and a good relationship with them. We meet with the Dean of Education there once a month to go through these kinds of issues. There's one researcher in particular that we're working very closely with, who's even provided professional development in-house for us and is working with a few of our schools. So we've got a tight partnership and relationship with that particular university. We don't have the luxury of having that kind of impact and partnership more broadly, but we, you know, we see the value in that.
You want to go?
Higher ed is definitely feeling that they have to do more in that respect, but what the literature shows, and we heard this talked about today, is embedded professional development is really what has the biggest impact. We in higher ed can kind of give the basic principles, we can give some practice, but every district has a different culture. What we're hearing today is when we go into your schools, there's going to be different expectancies, there's going to be different communities of practice. And the idea of teachers sharing best lessons rather than new teachers coming in and having, in the projects that we do, a lot of evaluations, we see a lot that fail. And one of the reasons they fail is that teachers do their own thing and they do very good things, but it's never scaled up. It's not a district community of practice, a school community of practice. And you have the opportunity to do that here, given the foundation you've established this year and with the support of the board in terms of trying to encourage that. So higher ed can do so much, higher ed needs to do more, there are always being questions, but I think where the rubber hits the road is in your classrooms.
Just to add on, so I know when Dr. Ross taught, it was the traditional approach. So I'm...
It was very good.
Yeah, it was very, very good and it was face-to-face. And there have been distance education programs since like the 70s, you know, like postal mail, distance education. I'm teaching a class in Hopkins of doctoral students that are online and will meet, kind of, well, not face-to-face, but online, you know, in a virtual room every couple of weeks and we email a lot. So technology isn't going to go away. I have friends who, in small businesses, they need to know how to use Excel, they need to know how to use technology, they need to know how to use computers. And I don't think that this is going to go away, so I think you, I think school districts have to figure out how you can effectively leverage technology to prepare students.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz?
So glad that last comment came because the very first thing I wrote at the top of mine was scalable. So, you know, and I apologize for missing the beginning of the presentation, but this is something that, gee, Dr. Presidio and I have talked a lot about, a lot. I will say, just at a very 30,000-foot level, I do have concerns. I do have concerns about scalability, duplicability, sustainability. I think it's phenomenal to have exceptional teachers who get it, who either they themselves were tech-savvy as college students or early in their career and are able to adapt and incorporate it. But the professional development piece depends on complete elasticity in the rest of the staff. And I think that's fundamentally unreasonable to expect. We have people that this is their passion, they, their adaptability, you know, they're early adopters to technology, early adopters to, you know, curriculum embeddedness for things like this, but not everybody has that capacity. And so the question becomes, what happens in the sixth-grade classroom next door? Or in the next building? Or in the next pyramid? And when we talk about equity, the question is, can you scale, duplicate and sustain this model? And that's a real question. And when I look at things like 4,500 requests for technical assistance or over 3,000 requests for hardware fixes, are we not creating a technology company out of FCPS? Do we not become a super form of Geek Squad in order to deliver curriculum? And then the question becomes, all of those resources that get diverted to technical assistance and hardware place, fixes, and then replacing and maintaining and keeping safe hardware and software and then talking about platforms? I mean, we're about to hit a consumer market in the next 90 days where we're going to have $1,000 cell phones, you know, flooding the market, which is going to increase the older model market exponentially. All your older cell phones, hold on to them, they're about to come worth a lot more as people, you know, are looking for and don't want to adopt, you know, that new technology as that works out, it's, you know, idiosyncratic, you know, changes. So, you know, I think that everybody on this team, if I could assign new homework, I would say that everybody on this team has to read Adam Alter's Irresistible, which is an entire book about the advancing addictive technologies and the business of keeping us addicted to those technologies, particularly young forming brains. And what that potentially, you know, what are the, you know, the long-term effects of this? And I don't, I don't think we know. And I personally visited, you know, some of the schools that have this and, you know, to some degree, I witnessed, you know, teachers becoming, you know, basically website aggregators and spending a lot of their time aggregating information for their students to then go use. And so they're basically sourcing websites for their students. And so I am not trying to be a complete Luddite, but what I am trying to say is, is that I think it is proper, in a, particularly in an education environment, to look at the pros and the cons and go into this eyes-wide-open in terms of the volume of time, of a teacher's time that we're expecting. One of the things that I heard was about librarians. And I'm hearing in greater sort of urgency, almost sort of like, you know, like a begging us to pay attention, is that with the way that we're doing professional development now and teachers not coming into the libraries, which, you know, we did for good reasons, that now librarians aren't able to apply library science to working with the students and helping them get materials that are unique to that student, that would help develop and broaden that student's interest because they're being checkout people. And so the technology that we've used in some ways in the classroom, then at the time where the child's own learning gets to be on-boarded with some self-directed time, is sort of lost because we're now not using the other professionals. So I don't know if you have any comments on those. I do note that Baltimore, I did a quick look, 4.5% ELLs. I don't know that that's particularly comparable to us. I mean, yes, they're big, but I was shocked to see such a low statistic on ELL students and what that means in terms of some challenges that we have here that maybe they don't have. So I don't know. I mean, I know that was a little bit, usually I try to ask questions...
I know.
But that's, you know, that's my top narrative and it's not a surprise. But I would, I would be interested at least on some initial observations.
I would, I would just, I mean, say a couple of things and I know that they're not going to be able to meet probably your expectations, given the amount of time and everything we have at the table today. I think you're 100% right in terms of we have to really make sure that our eyes are wide open with what we're doing, which is why we've been trying to go at a very slow pace, really trying to make sure that we're evaluating what we're doing and learning lessons. And that's why the partnership with, you know, outside, you know, more objective evaluation folks, I think is really important. We don't have it right yet, we don't have it perfect. We need to continue to ask ourselves some of those questions that you just asked and we're seeing some of those things pop up in the evaluation. We know that we need to support teachers with the workload, potential workload issues and increases. We think that we've got some ways to do that and some workarounds to do that. We know that we need to support our teachers with the potential distraction that electronics sometimes can cause in the classroom. So again, we think we've got the right idea and the right balance on when to use the tool and when not to, but that's in collaboration and ongoing reflection with teachers and principals and we need to continue to stay focused on that. So there's a lot of really important points, I think, that you raised that we would need to really unpack to have, you know, a nuanced conversation about where we are with respect to some of this work. I know we don't have time for that today. So I would just offer any individual board member or pairs of board members that would like to have that kind of discussion and dialogue with me in more detail, I always welcome that. I really appreciate Ms. Schultz because she oftentimes schedules the time to do that in her schedule and I appreciate that. Even if we don't agree on things, we at least have an opportunity to talk about them. So I'm happy to address some of those things in future discussions here at the board table or in individual meetings with you as well.
The only parting comment I have, Dr. Braybrand, and I've brought this up before, the ability for us to understand how, what students really think about this, I think, is crucial. And I certainly do advocate, and I know it's a scary thought, but I think that if we just take a deep breath and think about the potential value that comes from it, I think that we ought to be talking about a 360 evaluation from high school students. And I think that that would give us some insights about, and what I've heard in takeaways with students in student town halls, is that they like technology, they don't want technology in the classroom because they don't want it to distract from good teaching, but they like technology to be added for their, for their understanding, for their capacity, you know, to be used outside of the classroom. They don't want to be the help desk for their student or for their teachers, you know. So I do advocate us looking at a 360 evaluation so that we can start to take away some good information. And that, I think, could potentially help form better professional development and give us some insights from the people that we're actually delivering this to.
So I appreciate that as kind of a reminder. One of the things that actually we discussed with Dr. Ross and Dr. Morrison this morning was thinking about what Year Two of our evaluation of this initiative might look like. And they recommend and I concur that we get more information from students, so really expanding the scope of our student survey, maybe getting more student kind of focus groups so that we can get better, a better sense of student perspective. And then also, we'd really like to do more in terms of not evaluation, but observation in classrooms, not for teacher evaluation, but really looking at the instructional practice and getting a better sense from an outside objective view of how instruction is changing, where it's appropriate to use technology as a tool and maybe where we need to think differently about some of our practices. So those are two areas that we'd like to highlight in Year Two.
I'd love it. I'd love to come see one of those.
Ms. Keys-Gamar?
I want to say good morning while it's still morning. Okay, I'll throw these out and I assume that perhaps they'll have to get the information later, but I would like to continue on the issue of evaluation. I didn't hear and, or at least maybe perhaps I missed it, but I'm not sure how much teacher input or staff input we're having with respect to problems and even their own ideas for solutions. And so I'd like to see how that can be incorporated. And the other thing is, I think it was mentioned about a problem with perhaps lost devices or kids being distracted. Are we monitoring the extent to which that is happening and perhaps a response to that with respect to making sure that students understand their responsibility with respect to these digital devices?
So just real briefly, I would say we can get you more information on the things that we're currently doing with respect to that and our next quarterly written update that we provide to the board, just to save a little bit of time here today. But yes, we're very much partnering with principals and principals partnering with teachers to make sure that we're understanding their challenges and trying to address their challenges. But we can get you more details on things like laptop technology fixes and issues and things like that.
Let me, let me just preface that by saying, I certainly want to hear from principals, but I also want to be careful about not necessarily always filtering the teacher's comments through the principal. So I'm not sure if that's happening or not, but I want you to know that would be a concern for me.
I am with you completely. I love to talk to teachers personally. When we do these evaluations, we did conduct classroom teacher focus groups and we asked perceptions on a survey that we administered to teachers. And sometimes there was a disconnect between teachers and principals, so that is absolutely in our report.
Finished, Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Okay. I will just briefly say, in the spirit of time, I won't make too many comments, but I'm thrilled with the backpack program in particular and that's stunning information that the home access has gone from as low as 57% to 100%. The, you know, we sometimes assume that everybody has an email address, but we know in many parts of our county, we have schools where fewer than half of our parents even have email addresses, much less access. So I think that's great that we're providing home access to 100% of our kids in the backpack schools or at least in some of them. in the Backpack schools, or at least in some of them. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. McElveen about, we need to have the conversation about countywide internet access, and that's something that, in a minute, we're going to go to the next steps, and I hope we capture that as one of the next steps as well. And I also have to say, and I know it's like with every new advance, there's, there's something that you have to think about in larger terms, and I agree also with Ms. McLaughlin about, we will have to eventually grapple with the issue of screen time. You know, that's just the reality. So we have one, I think, very quick go-back by Ms. McLaughlin, and then we're going to go to next steps and then close out.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure there was clarity here that going into year two, this is your, the programs we have in place. We're not adding any new schools, we're just continuing to learn from this year one?
Year, year two is continuation of support for the Phase One schools, the existing schools that we reference in the slide deck.
Okay. And then, and then, Dr. Braybrand, at some point, as you all look at this, it would be helpful, I think, for us as a board to understand at a macro level, where will we going then as a division? Because at some point, people will start to say, we understood this has like up to a five-year evaluation process, but are we not going to touch our other schools then until we're done at, at year five? And I don't expect an answer today on that.
And actually, we do have one other quick go-back, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
It's really just as we're getting ready for the next steps, in the report, the issue of digital citizenship, it was pretty clear that all of our teachers are very aware of good practices for digital citizenship, but that there are some concerns about how our students are dealing with it. I welcome the digital citizenship modules, I haven't had a chance to go through them for parents, but I'm concerned that we don't have a focused approach for digital citizenship for all of our students, and perhaps as our recommendations, because we have professional development on our recommendations, but there's no recommendation on digital citizenship for our students, and I would like to see a plan for how we have a comprehensive approach to digital citizenship, maybe linking it to the SRNR.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you have next steps to show us? Okay. So I had one previous from Mrs. Corbett-Sanders as well. You were looking for some numbers, I believe, is that up there?
Inclusion in the next budget. Inclusion in our budget, the sustainability of this program, especially for our early, or e-learning Backpack schools, given the...
Well, let's start from the top. Ms. McLaughlin, does that capture what you had asked for?
It does, and then I would just say, from a public engagement standpoint, if we've got something on the website that talks about FCPS ON, I think it's important to have those links for the community who's also trying to understand the work we're doing and who we're partnering with.
Okay. Could I just see a quick show of hands of how many people support that as a next step? Okay, that's a majority. Ms. Keys-Gamar, does that reflect the next step that you had? Include information about technology fixes in next quarterly report. Could you restate what you had?
Right. I was talking about making sure we received information from the folks that are actually implementing it on the ground, making sure that we're including their comments in terms of improvements was one, the first part. And then the second part had to...
If I could, that information, as it's been collected so far, is included in the narrative report that's posted on board docs for today's meeting. So, Dr. Morrison was referencing the survey information, the focus group information, so we have a subset of that information already, and we can, plan to continue to collect it in the next phase of the evaluation.
Right, okay. And I think the second question had to do, Ms. Corbett-Sanders added on to that, but basically making sure we understood where the problems were with respect to students and, and whether, where we're actually losing them, they're coming with uncharged devices, and they're, you know, they're being distracted and they're not using it appropriately. Are we monitoring those situations?
So, I would say with respect to that...
Did you want to try to restate, did you want to try to restate this, Ms. Keys-Gamar, to, you know, how would, how would you?
Well, I mean, if it's included, I mean, mind you, I don't have a device, so if it's in the board docs, I didn't read it. I'm perfectly willing to admit that.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay. All right. So you feel that that's already, that we can, we can access?
I think so, and, you know, for folks in the room that don't know, Ms. Keys-Gamar just was...
Just, just was, yes.
Just sworn in last week as a, as a new board member.
So we need to get you...
So I think perhaps what we could do is I could get you access to the documents, and then if you'd like, we could have further conversation about some of your questions, and then if you need some next steps, I can follow up on those with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Then, so I guess we can remove that for the time being now, okay? And Mr. McElveen, I, I think this also included having conversations with the county?
That was my main purpose, was conversations, but happy to hear, get reports back on work.
Okay, so let's...
There's a report that was developed jointly with the county as part of the One Fairfax in the skip program that was actually presented to the both boards, in terms of that subcommittee, that we can provide that report.
So perhaps, you know, can continue conversations with the county on countywide internet access and receive regular updates? Would that do it? Okay. Then, would that, that would go in what's now bullet two? That can all be in bullet two? Continue, continue conversations with the county? And receive regular updates? And I think the rest of it works? Does that look all right? Okay, can I see a show of hands of how many people support that as a next step? That's a majority, so that's all right. Okay, well, plan for comprehensive approach to digital citizenship, does that capture?
It's really addressing digital citizenship by our students. So if we can, and I...
For our students, it's not by.
For our students, yeah.
Does that do it?
Yeah, I guess so.
Provide for comprehensive approach to digital citizenship for our students.
For our students, for, across the county.
In other words...
Okay.
Well, even for them.
Right, but it's not...
Right. I mean...
So just to say a little bit on current state, and I definitely appreciate and I think understand where this question and next step is coming from, but just real fast, we do have the digital citizenship required training for staff. As part of that training is the expectation that you then work with your students around these skills, and we have the new modules for parents to use with their kids. Obviously, we can't, you know, compel anybody to use them, but that's a great resource. So if we're going to go towards a digital citizenship required curriculum at particular grade levels, I think that we might want to have a little bit more discussion about that.
Yes, Megan?
Just to clarify on that point, actually, what I was envisioning, and I thought this is what I was hearing, if you have like a, just a training module, it might last fifteen minutes, maybe thirty minutes. The model we've used for concussion protocol training for our athletes and their parents, to me, is an excellent starting point. If we have a training module on digital citizenship for our parents, and even how it relates to SRNR and discipline, doing the same for our students is what I thought, Ms. Karen Corbett-Sanders, and certainly a lot of us feel, is we're, we're not asking for a whole curriculum thing, we're saying, you know, fifteen...
So how would you rephrase that to reflect that?
A plan for comprehensive approach to digital citizenship for our students across the county. Digital citizenship training module? I mean, because we have one for parents, but we should be having it for students.
Is that, does that capture what you were saying, Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Yeah, a training module.
Okay, all right. So let's see, how many folks can...
It's a shared...
So...
So, Dr. Presidio, did you want to speak to that?
Listen, I can go create, well, I won't, I'm looking at the folks in the back who can go create a training module, right? But the efficacy of something like that, I think raises some questions. What we've tried to do with the parent work is there's a lot more complexity and nuance than how you might check for a medical issue like a concussion. These are conversations that need to be had about decision-making, responsibility, there's a lot involved in it. So we could create a training module that just like outlines the major, like, issues and topics, but to actually develop good skills there is going to take a lot of support from classroom teachers and from parents, and that's the approach that we've kind of taken right now.
So it sounds like there's more of a, more to be thought about on this, so, Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
So if we can just have you come back to us with it, because it's obvious it's not working. If you look at what you've got in your report, the teachers understand digital citizenship, the students don't.
So would we like to ask staff to bring back an approach towards better digital citizenship to us?
Yeah, a shared model, maybe, a shared responsibility model.
Without saying it had to be a training module?
That's fine. We just need to have a shared responsibility model that includes our students, our parents, and our teachers. Because what happens is that we have an SRNR that everybody signs up to, but I don't think anybody understands that that SRNR applies to digital citizenship, and we are seeing an increasing number of incidents where kids just, you know, send off something without really thinking about the long-term impact to it.
So does that work for you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, and that, does that work for you, Dr. Presidio?
I would put a shared responsibility in there.
The bring-back-to-board plan for shared responsibility for digital citizenship, is that where you would put that?
Hmm?
Okay.
Let's give that a try.
Okay, let's see how many board members can support that as a, as a next step. All right, that's, that is a, that's a majority, so that's our, I want to, next step. Okay, last bullet we have is include...
I'm sorry.
Okay. So the next one we have, before Mr. Wilson tells, tells us his bullet, is include in budget, sustain, I think that must be a plan for sustainability, right? A plan for, a plan for sustainability of this program, especially for the Backpack schools. Is that the right way to say it? E-learning Backpack schools, or is it just the...
They're not there, losing grants.
The, especially for Backpack schools?
For your grant that has one more year.
Yeah.
It's a four-year grant. One more year. Yeah, so...
Do we want, do we want to say Backpack schools, or do we want to say for high-poverty schools?
I, I think the, the appropriate term is the e-learning Backpack schools, so...
It is, okay, all right. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, okay. Oh, that was easy. Mrs. Strauss?
I just sent everybody an email, just in acknowledgement of time. When we talk about sustainability, we have the issue, we already have a number of elementary schools and whole grade levels that are one-to-one now, and, and then you have the issue of the has and the have-nots, and some of the one-to-one are actually, they have-nots, but they've somehow figured it out. So, it is important that we look at sustainability, but there needs to be an acknowledgement. We're all over the map with BYOB and partnerships and, and, you know, generous corporations. So at least it has been said that how we move forward altogether in a research-based way has lots of fingers in it.
I believe Dr. Braybrand wanted to weigh in.
Well, it sounds like you all are about to wrap up, so let me just make a couple of comments if I could.
Absolutely.
Part of my first goal that I'll be sharing with you in a week or two for our strategic retreat is streamlining the strategic plan. And the honest conversation we've had in the last two months with the leadership team is, before I'm going to consider this in the streamlined strategic plan, we need a strategic plan for FCPS ON. So that's what we're in the middle of doing. There are a lot of questions, scalability, cost, what's the bang for the buck? What are we getting? Is it a tool or is it a transformation? I firmly believe this is not about replacing teachers, this is about giving the teachers one more tool to be able to engage kids. So, we really need to create the strategic plan for this before it can be considered part of the division plan. Here's the good news, I tell you, going from a district that I went there and I sort of just jumped in, and I think we did pretty good. Many districts have made a mistake by going too fast. I think Fairfax County has been doing this with methodology, with a partner, so in one way, going slower has actually been to our advantage. We've got to get it right. We also have to admit what Ms. Strauss just said, lots of schools individually have started their own vision. We've got to come up with what a comprehensive vision of technology is going to look like in our school system, and say what we're going to support as a school division. Though our real advantages, I will just tell you what kids told me in four years in my prior district is, the unorganized kid is now uber-organized, there's nothing missing. There's no missing paper because the computer never, unless the memory crashes, never, never goes away.
And the teacher.
Yes. So it's a big help for teachers, and a lot of our kids with IEPs experience, it's like, oh, everything's there, I can still find it. A lot of kids in, in classrooms, and we have classrooms, as we know, twenty-five to thirty kids, actually started to communicate more, particularly in high school with their teachers via email than they ever did by raising a hand in class. It was just an interesting insight I got. We have infrastructure in place in Fairfax unlike almost any other system with S-bits and T-specs that have been years and years old, that are already there to take advantage of adding this technology in, so that's a real advantage. The bottom line is PD that works, and it's meaningful to actually have teachers want to use this as a tool, and the whole issue of equity, scalability, and cost, those are the big things to think about. And we have a little bit more work to do before we're ready to bring that to the board. The good news is, all these folks who wanted the streamlined strategic plan, no, I'm not going to bring it to your consideration for the plan until we have a strategic plan for this group. So, that creates its own urgency to get it ready. And just because in the first draft it doesn't make it, doesn't mean it's not going to be. But we've got to get our work done for what this is going to look like in five years in the school division, ten years in the school division, what the costs are, what the benefits are, what the concerns like screen time, screen time are. But overall, Fairfax has started down this road, and I think it's done so in a very strategic, well-intentioned approach. We just need to put some fine points here now on what we're going to do going forward, and really answer some cost and equity issues, so.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you.
Just to complete this, I, I, we, we aren't saying that the plan has to be included in the budget, I don't think. We, we're, we're asking for the staff to bring us a plan for sustainability, correct?
Right.
So, you know, bring, bring back, right, a plan for sustainability. Can I see how many board members can support that? Okay, that's a majority. And Mr. Wilson had another next step.
Yeah, I think Dr. Braybrand covered this, but I, I would just like to make sure that we don't lose sight of the increased content, student content knowledge piece of it, and that we get regular updates on that aspect of it. I just think that's important, both for us, as to who's being most benefited by this, what parts of our segments of our student population, but also for the public to see sort of what are, what is the bang for the buck in terms of content knowledge.
Does that capture what you're looking for, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, continue to provide updates on increased content knowledge. Could I see a show of hands, how many people can support that? That seems to be a majority. All right, so that finishes our next steps, and thank you so much for all of you coming today and providing an excellent presentation. I know we're going to have more conversations about this. This is, this is wonderful. Thank you so much. We'll have a three-minute break before we go to our next work session.